Row, Kyle.
Mayor Tony Holmes.
Here.
That's Mayor Mike Trump.
Here.
Alderman Jim Fancher.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Tinsel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Nye.
Here.
To the Attorney Kerry Hertz.
Here.
To the Administrator Danny Stinchard.
Here.
We would ask, with this large crowd especially, that if you have cell phones, turn them on vibrate, turn them off, please. There's some important issues on the agenda tonight. I am going to maintain order of the meeting. We're not going to have disruptions. And a couple of things that I would like to make a statement on before we start. To my knowledge, and to everybody else's knowledge here, there's been no intentions of selling the Tanner building or doing away with Newport Grammar School. That's totally irrelevant information and rumors that's got started. So I wanted to clear that up before we get started. Citizens comments at the end, we'll have that as usual. However, we know the budget's the big issue, the tax increase. The next meeting will be a public hearing at 5:30 before the meeting. And if it's at all possible, any comments concerning the budget or the tax increase, that would probably be the best time to do that. I'd appreciate your support in that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I asked Colonel Dunn to address the us, and I kind of gave him this information when we were doing it at first. Colonel, do you want to, can we do that now?
Sure, absolutely.
I didn't know if you were wanting to do it now. You said you have an obligation, but I'm just.
Yes, that'll be fine. I'll allow that.
Okay.
But last time we voted, and I think the minutes were incorrect, we voted that we would do the hear from the citizens first.
No, we did not.
Yes, we did.
No, we did not.
We didn't vote, but you agree that we should do that.
I said we would look at it, but I'm.
You didn't say we'd look at it.
I run the meeting, and we're leaving them at the end. Okay?
Well, you said, "All I'm doing," you can go check. I guess we recorded.
James, there was no vote taken.
I didn't say that. I said, "You agree." You set the agenda, and you said, "Well, it doesn't make any difference to me if we do them first or second."
Well, that's irrelevant, because I'm leaving it at the end. You know, it's my job, it's my job to run the meeting, and that's where I'm at.
Well, I tell you, I don't make.
Colonel Dunn.
Someone you should keep up with what you're doing.
I keep up with what I'm doing. Yes, sir, you have that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Alderman. I appreciate y'all hearing me out tonight. I'm just here for a thought, an idea. How I got here is a longer story than we have time for. But why I'm here is not. Why I'm here is that there is a cabin that has a very interesting history to the people of Cock County, Tennessee. The owners who are here, and there are many, many descendants, I'm sure, that are present also. It's called the Reagan House. It's a log house that sits in Basinger Hollow. And the whole purpose is, is that the owners would like to give it to the city of Newport. A suggestion would be is that in giving the log house to the citizens of Newport is to put it up around where the Gateway Garage is. It doesn't have to be that way, but it's just an idea. Plenty of room where the Gateway Garage used to sit. There's a couple of gazebos, I believe, at least one maybe up on the property and some trees. Everybody that would come into town, whether it's the Cosby Highway, or the old Main Street, or Knoxville Highway, or North Carolina, when they come by there, have to stop, possibly, for the traffic light. If they have to stop, then they can look around and see that there's a log house. And I don't really know exactly, although I have the history here of it, called the Reagan House. And it sits in Basinger Hollow. Mrs. Carpenter, I don't know if y'all, I have with me, and I don't know the year of this article, but Miss Shirley Elliott interviewed Mrs. Jo Carpenter about this cabin. And it was a big three-page article, and it has a lot of photographs of the cabin or the log house, and a lot of the other details. School teacher. Mrs. Carpenter was a long-time school teacher, and it told about the old schools that she taught in, the different schools, and why she taught in those schools. One of the interesting articles in the article with Shirley Elliott was that there was a school teacher came aboard with them, and as she followed him down, she tried to step in his exact same shoe prints, because she wanted to be a school teacher. What a story. What a story is that she wanted to be a school teacher, and she wanted to walk in his footprints, so she could learn how to be a school teacher. Lot of interesting history. Captain Reagan, 1861 or so, was inscripted, I think, probably by the Confederate Army, but then wound up probably in the Union, was a Union sympathizer anyway. And a lot of interesting stories that took place, especially the story of pilots, and I wasn't aware of that. I thought a pilot was when it flew an airplane, or at least when Milo Hearst had me work for 15 cents an hour over here, pile cow manure out of a stall on the wagon. But in those days, they had what they call a pilot would show people, lead people to safe places to go and safe ways to go and do things during the early part of the war. But in any event, a lot of interesting stories about this particular house. So instead of taking away, we hear so much about that, of taking away from the image of Cock County and the city of Newport, we thought Johnny and Peggy, I have a picture of the log cabin, if I could pass down, just let y'all see it just briefly. When you see Ms. Peggy, there are about 73, 74, somewhere along in there, when she got married? Yes. And she's standing there at the house. It has a big rock chimney, and all that. And her husband was born in that house, I believe I'm telling you correctly on that. Was born in that house at least 15 or 20 years ago. But a lot of history. If we could set it up and maybe put a plaque, or put a, there was a book written by Captain Reagan that told some of the exploits during 1861, 1865, about what went on here in Cock County, Tennessee. So maybe that could be made available for tourists and local folks alike to look at. But in any event, it may take some doing, but what I'm doing here tonight is to make the offer. The folks here, the families here, the owners, want to make the offer to the city to consider, look at it, see if it's feasible. Number of ways, I know the first thing is going to say, "Well, how we pay for it?" Well, you know, there's a number of ways of doing that. We could take up an offering here tonight, but there's many ways that.
Not a good, not a good night.
A lot of good ways we could do that. Of course, you know, there's always ways of looking for grants and things that would help restore some historical significance to the community. But in any event, if you would, just consider that, allow us to come back at the appropriate time, and for any ideas or any questions that the mayor and the city council may have.
Mike, I'm sure that's the way it works, considering.
Okay, okay. All righty. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Colonel.
Appreciate you.
Crystal.
And I may not need to address anything anymore. I had asked to speak in regards to a letter that I think it was Mr. Gribble had sent to the newspaper, as well as some reference to possibly something that the city finance director had sent out regarding one of the options that you all were looking at was giving the grammar school to the county. But if you're saying that that's not anything that you all are considering, then I don't, y'all are not considering that?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, I don't know. This appeared, the Intana's letter, and it says, "Opportunities was to allow Newport Grammar School to revert back to Cock County control." It's not Mr. Gribble wrote that.
Oh, this was like a letter in the paper.
And it says, "Sell Tanner building and other unused city property." Now, that came from, it was looked on to the back of that are dated 4/24/215 Intana.
Well, that was explained during the budget workshop. That was explained. You brought that up during the workshop, about that being in there. And I made the statement then, that that was not a proposal, that that was a list of things that we're looking at if we don't have a tax increase or some kind of revenue stream, that down the road, these are a list of things that you're going to be looking at. And that goes along with other things, like the animal shelter, a full-time fire department. You start, you know, when you don't have a revenue stream, you start having to shed expenditures. And so that was put in there, saying, "Here's the kind of things that you're looking at down the road if you're not going to do a tax increase." We made it very clear at the workshop, that was not a proposal.
Okay. And I know that y'all aren't wanting to even get on that today, so I just wanted to make sure, since it's not, I can't stay for the meeting, I've got a family obligation, but I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to talk. If it ever changes, and that does become an option, and I miss it somehow, just let me know, so I can be a part of that. Thank you.
You're welcome, Crystal. James, if I'm not mistaken, even if that was an issue at some point in time, who knows when, or if it ever would come up, but the city would still be liable for the building expense, correct?
The city would still be liable for all the debt incurred during the building process. And also, you know, I think that everyone has stated in the past, that if we ever got into that kind of a dire strait, that it would be put on a referendum, not done by city council. You know, that's not something, that would be a momentous strike this community would take. And you don't put that on five people to bear that burden and suffer the consequences. You put that kind of a decision to the people, and let the people decide, and the referendum, and the voting. Just don't do that. And that is not a proposal, that has not been a proposal. The list that Tina put out was a list of things that if you don't do a tax increase, that are in jeopardy down the road, not today, but down the road. And like I say, there's several of them. That's just, that's one of the biggest, that's one of the most controversial. But I promise, if you got into some of the others, if you start trying to do away with the animal shelter to save money, you're going to run into controversy. You start looking at the option of going to a volunteer fire department to save money. That is, you're going to take a hit on your fire insurance. There are no good options, other than trying to increase revenue. That's kind of the point that Tina was trying to get across in this document. Here's the kind of things that you've got, that you don't want to get rid of, but these are options you're going to have to look at if you don't bring the revenue in to support these things. And I think that's true. We've talked about that before. It's like in your house, you know, your household income. You have to have enough household income to keep up your lifestyle. And that's the exact same thing the city of Newport has, in any city, any government, any business. You know, we're trying to run the city like a business. That's what everybody said we want. We want the city run like a business, and that's what we're trying to do. And so when you look at running something like a business, or like your household, you live within your meanings, you pay as you go, you don't go in debt, and you pay for what you got, if you want to keep what you got. If you don't pay your mortgage, they come kick you out of the house. If you don't pay your car payment, they come repo your car. And we can't keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing to do everything that we need to do, when we need to fix a building, or we need to buy a decent equipment. We just can't keep borrowing. We already at 54% of our debt, debt ratio, and we're supposed to be at 30. That's how far over we are in debt. We can't afford to go in debt anymore. We have to pay as we go. And to do that, you've got to have revenue. And that was a misinterpretation of what that meant. Now, I'm sure there was no intentional misinterpretation, this is one of those things. But there has never been a proposal discussed, sell the Tanner building, or to do away with the grammar school. That was just one of several things that are in jeopardy down the line if we don't have revenue. And that's just a hard fact. I mean, I could sit here like some of the predecessors and tell you, "We're in the best shape financially we ever been." You know, I've heard that told. And then I also knew that when I'd go, our gas cards were turned off, our telephones were turned off, and we tried to order stuff, they'd tell us we're on a cash-only basis because our credit's low. That's not the case anymore. But we have improved it, as far as we can improve it, without some revenue. That's just the bottom line. And so I'm sorry there was any misunderstanding that got whipped up by what Tina put out, as far as showing, "Here's all these things that are going to be in jeopardy down the line if you don't get the revenue in here to support." And that's all that is. That is never a proposal, never considered, will not be considered, as far as I know, other than, especially at the grammar school, that it would be done only as a referendum, and let the people decide, not five people.
James, I sent out an email to some friends, and it basically said that I used a term that Alderman Hansel's been using, that we're going to be the martyrs, good or bad or indifferent. And that so be it, that's what we signed up for. But I've been gone away from here for 20-plus years, and I don't name names, I don't know, but I wish we could line up people responsible for fiscal irresponsibility and the reckless spending that's took place here over the years. I can see her naming names, y'all can say names as well. But we've got to make some tough decisions. We're going to be the bad guys, or the good guys, or whatever the case may be, and I'm ready for it. I mean, I've got 43 more months left on this deal. I'm planning, I'm loving, I'm loving being a part of this, because I'm coming here to make Newport a better place. Now, what that's going to be, we're going to make the decision here, or hope we're making the right decision. I am not going to say one word about closing Newport Grammar School. I know I teach a school in Knoxville, walked in today, and every teacher had his newspaper out. McIntyre let down by budget. School teacher's been waiting for a 5% pay of increase, they hadn't paid an increase in six years. There was about 17 teachers today where I'm at, said they're quit. You know what? There's employees here that haven't had pay raises in 10, 11, 12 years. I don't know what the exact answer is, there's going to have to be a give or take here, but the fact of the matter is, it's all on us, and I think we're ready to work on it.
People, I'd like to say a word or two, too. This story's made me sick, the people you've been friends with all your life and people. But when you got, when they talked about running for this, people asked, "Would you try to straighten the city up, or get it in a financial situation that you can live with?" You know, I'm not, like I say, I don't blame prior administration, I don't blame, but it's gone on for so many years, you're talking about like 13 years or so, that it's just kept getting worse and worse. It's snowballed, and nobody's done anything about it. Nobody up here wants to, I know for a fact, don't want to raise taxes. It comes to play, sometimes our city's been living on the credit card, just time after time, and then not having enough money to come in. It's got to stop, you know. Whether you like it or whether you don't like it, we're trying our best, and I'd like for people, I just hope we'd be friends, like to be friends, because we're doing what we think is necessary. And I know what other people are, too. I guarantee you, there's two sides to this issue. We've put ourselves in your place, and we're, and I hope you put ourselves in our place. You people standing up, I'd like to be able to give you this seat here, so.
The fiscal responsibility of not raising taxes over 14 years is ludicrous. It's beyond stupidity. It's beyond stupidity. 14 years of not raising the tax, as much as I don't want to pay taxes or anything like that, just like you do, that does not make sense at all. So here we are, martyrs, let's get it done.
Okay. Item 3 is the approval of the minutes of April the 14th, 2015 meeting. You've had a chance to look those over, are there any changes? Or do we have a motion to approve as written?
I think, again, I think page 9 is incorrect.
Page what?
I'm sorry, page 7, line 9.
Okay.
Is incorrect. There's a portion of that was left out.
Where are you at, Roger?
In the minutes, page 7, line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
It says Alderman Gribble asks for the citizens' comments to be moved to the beginning of the meeting to get people's input before voting.
That's correct.
None of these wants it at the beginning?
Well, I didn't ask that. You set the agenda, and I asked you, and you said yes. And I'm sure the meeting was taped. Let's show that.
Well, and it was put in the paper that it was voted on, but it was not.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get what it, the paper, all I remember is what you said. It's on a tape here somewhere.
This is what we're doing, so, you know, I'm carrying on with the meeting.
Oh, well.
Okay?
You can.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll make the motion.
I see.
Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor indicate you're saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no.
No.
Item 4, Employee of the Month, Chief.
I first want to start by saying that Employee of the Month is just a little bit of a misnomer, but we are going to give him credit for Employee of the Month for this month. As you all are aware, each year we have a Patrol Productivity Award winner, and that's not just based on tickets written. I've heard so many times, it's based on the number of tickets they write, or arrests, and that's not true. It's based on attendance, it's based on punctuality, it's based on performance at several different levels. And the last year's award winner was Derek Gene Webb. Derek has since been moved into the detective division, not as a promotion, but as an assignment. Just wanted to let you all know that we truly appreciate Newport Federal Bank for sponsoring that Patrol Productivity Award every year, and they're gracious to do that yearly. Derek was a close winner, the runner-up behind him was just a few points behind. And it's, you know, I just want the public to know, this is not an award that's based on numbers of arrests or numbers of citations. It's got everything in it. And there's a big, long scale, we check it monthly, and at the end of the year, we add up the numbers. Derek did a great job in all of his areas. He was ranked number one in all but one area, I think he was number two in one area. And he did a great job for us, and was well-prepared to step up in street investigations and move those forward at the street level, and then help with the detectives' work. We assigned him up there just for a couple of weeks, and we had an absence in that division, and he has proved himself very well. He has, I guess, stood the call and answered very well. And we're honored to call him our Patrol Productivity Award winner, as well as name him the Newport City Employee of the Month for May of 2015.
Yeah, give him the jack. Derek. Chiefs are holding out on you.
I'm on that.
Yeah, you did. I was watching. Item 5 is a report from interim city administrator, James Fancher.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing, and I'm going to turn it over to Tina, she has some things she wants to talk about. The only thing I have on is, we spoke at the workshop a little bit, and I've had many conversations, one-on-one with y'all, about the sale of surplus property. What I would like is your permission to move forward with that. Alderman Knight and I have been discussing it. I'm kind of leaning on him as my expert, since he is in the real estate field. And I would just like you all to give us permission to look at the properties. He's already been looking at them, he's already gave me a kind of a cursory idea on one. But we need, what I would like to do, and I've got Jeff Cody already looking, designing the signs for us, but I would like to, on the signs we put on there for sale, I would like to put the asking price, because that will save people from having to call and say, "Well, I'm interested in the building, you know, what are y'all asking for?" Now, you know, Alderman Knight being in that field, I think he's very qualified to make estimation on what a good asking price will be. I think everybody in my discussions with y'all individual has realized that we probably are not going to get back what we paid for those buildings, sadly. I wish that approved, wish we could get double what we paid for. But reality is what it is. And so if y'all would, I appreciate it if y'all would give us permission, a green light or whatever, I don't know if it would necessarily require a vote, but to move forward and set prices and put signs on, start putting signs on those properties to put them on the market.
I think it's a great idea. What's your pleasure, Councilor?
We've all, I've heard it discussed, and it said, you know, everybody's in favor of selling the property, you know, trying to do everything we can do, I want the public to know that we've got a plan for some things, it's not just a matter of asking for money. It's a plan for the first time in a long time, to try to get this situation straightened up. And one of the things was trying to sell you your property, if I'm, I'm in favor of it, if anybody's going to put it.
Bobby, your expertise, are we going to get 50 cents on a dollar, a dime on a dollar? Is there certain properties that demand a price that, you know, go back to things that's happened in the past? Some of the figures I've seen, that what they pay for certain properties will make you want to throw open your mouth. But what's your value of some of the properties?
Bobby, if some of them 50 cents on a dollar, maybe one of them even less.
Well, the first, the first three that we wanted to look at are the buildings. Now, we have others that are just lots, but the buildings, we thought we would try those first, because probably, you know, they're the most vague. And of course, we gave 40, 82, and 55 for the three buildings. And, you know, I don't, I don't think we'll get that out of them, but we'll ask whatever. I think, you know, I think we need to put an amount, we have to know what we're going to ask for before we try to sell them. Now, we need to put a logical amount on, you know, if you put an amount on it that no human's going to consider, you're not going to get any phone calls. It's got to be somewhere in the ballpark for what it's worth, before anybody's going to show any interest in. Bobby and I have talked about that, we talked with Glenn.
Real estate in the city, just like anywhere else, you don't know how long you'll have to hang on to it, because people home and stuff, that's not a situation you can say, "We're going to sell it tomorrow," you got to sell it when you can.
Right, it could be on the market, we could put a sign on it, and it's set there for years, they're ready. You're hoping on it, but.
How long do we have them now?
Three years.
That's another three years, yeah.
How many of us?
Mayor, I bring them in, that we put this on the agenda, and we need to waive the rules to get it on the agenda. We need a motion to do that, and then.
Make a motion if we put these properties on the agenda, to vote to put these properties and liquidate them, and what we can make it work.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I see.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate you're saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no?
So the sellers, we see in Newport, it's not a real estate agent, right?
Correct.
Okay. We're not, he's not selling, he's just going to help us get a price. Now, we'll sell them ourselves.
I've listed that as item J on the agenda, that'd be the last item.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to Tina.
Is that all, James?
Yes, well, Tina, I'm going to turn it over to Tina to discuss.
Okay, all right.
There were two organizations that had requested a donation from the city of Newport. These are not ones that the city had given anything to before. One of them is the Senior Citizens Home Assistance Service. There was no dollar amount specified in the request letter. And the second one was the Helen Ross McNabb, and they were requesting 1,500 in this next budget year. As they are new, they weren't added yet, but I need to know, do you want these added to the budget? The first one being the Senior Citizens Home.
Celine, what did we help you with? I thought that's.
That's different.
That's different.
That's the office I need to.
We are different.
Okay, it sounded like the same.
Yeah, it does, but it's.
Senior citizens.
Big confusion, both city and county.
Is that our comments?
Yes.
I would say, timing's impeccable here, I'd say leave them off until next year. I'm not trying to throw them back down the street.
I helped them all, but one time I scored saving, trying to get everything down, or leave them.
Given the $50 apiece that we gave the other group, that'd be $550 each.
Well, they're wanting to be on the budget, right?
Yes.
Yes.
They want to be part of the budget.
No, but we could offer them.
Make a donation, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, we can give them a, a one-time donation of $250, which would be $50 each, for my pool, but not on the budget.
That's a good idea.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Make a motion.
Yeah, if you just, if everybody, all five agrees, anybody disagree?
Oh, you have to do sign the requisition.
That's it.
That should straighten y'all's expression.
The problem, not the problem, but my issue is, I've got a whopping $10.72, because I bought some sporting goods equipment that I'm going to donate back to the city recreation park. So, these guys have got, out of their public relations account, $150 left, I've got $10.72.
Well, I think that was the next, it would be the next.
For, for the next year, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Brown girl, pissed off.
Spent it all in one place.
Tane, anything else?
In your package, you should have a copy of the debt policy. And just per the guidelines, this is something that should be provided anytime we go over the budget. No change or action is required unless you want to do something. And it's just our policy for the city of Newport. And there was a copy of the Newport Grammar School budget supplied to you, and I just, it was so large, we went and put it with the original email in there. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Tina. Item six, there is no, no appointments to any boards. Item seven, a report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance.
Excuse me. I don't have a real report, other than we've, we have submitted a grant to the Wright Family Foundation. It's from part of the S.I. group, and we're, I believe they are discussing the grants on Friday, the 15th of May. We're hoping for a positive response. We would also respectfully like to ask for your permission, the city council's permission, to hold a fundraiser on August 6th, Thursday, in conjunction with the Tennessee Picnic event. It would be at the Tanner Building. The Tennessee Picnic Group has a insurance policy, and we would be under their umbrella. I can give you more details as we formulate them, but we'd like to get your permission to hold the event at the Tanner parking lot.
We need to vote on that, anything we got this, we need to vote on.
Yeah, well, I did it.
Motion to add that to it.
We have a motion.
Add that to it, to the agenda.
I'll make that a motion to add the Tanner Preservation Fundraiser to this agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? Any discussion?
The only thing that I would have given, I'm sure, if I saw, that we remain a coffee bag.
Of the insurance policy, oh, sure, of course. Not a problem. Thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no? Okay, there's nothing under item eight, old business under new business. Item A is consideration of ordinance 2015-01, Budget Amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance, and the words, and that is an ordinance that will need a second reading and a public hearing. It's ordinance 2015-01, An Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital Program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2014-2015.
Any discussion, questions, or a motion to approve that amendment?
What does this actually do?
This keeps us in compliance and allows them to spend dollars where needed. There are a number of departments and line items that did not have enough money budgeted to cover some unexpected expenditures. A lot of it's in the salt. We have repairs and items that weren't expected, and they just don't have the budget dollars to cover these things that aren't planned.
And it transfers, it just keep your voting in order with the state, and with the law, and like, what, like fuel, we'll get it. Fuel is down, the cost is way down below what we booked for last year. And I can get the police department, because I, I look at it more, but in the police department, so far this year, we've saved $2,000 fuel as a bonus, with the exact same kind of license that we spent $2,000, and at this point, we can add through this, through the end of April last year. Okay, but now, if you run over, okay, and, well, we run over the police department, it's in vehicle maintenance. We've got a lot, we've got a lot of problems with cars, and vehicle maintenance ends up running over the line of them out. So, with this, we transfer some of this money out of gas, which you need at my feet, down into vehicle tires where it is. And so, it's, it's, it's stuff like that, we're shoving funds around like that. And we have a lot back during the course of the year. We try to do the quarter leads, we try to get, and we encourage back, per se, we've got that for the leads, and so, this will last one of the year, because we'll have a living in the night, so that's, say, a lead a year, and that'll be all for this year.
What's your pleasure, Councilor?
This is the line out of 31600, the credit of $1,000. We're able to do this because of our, our surplus that came in unexpectedly.
Yes, favorable sales tax revenue is actually going to cover all these additional items that came up, and so, we won't be taking anything from the fund balance, and it'll actually put a little bit deep, like 5,000. So, we're covering it with the revenue that come in. Fortunately, there was that revenue that came in to cover it, because that was unexpected also.
Tina, Dr. James, I appreciate the job, the job you're doing, but we know pretty well exactly where everything is, what's going on, and being informed, and I thank the public for informing, proving that that makes a big difference, again, with y'all been over backwards. Thank you for any questions. If they know their money's spent the right way, the correct way, the time to do what we need to do, not any waste and all that, I don't think a lot of them has the nearest problem either, if they know we're trying to do it wisely, and I appreciate you doing it.
The $18,900 from Parks and Recreation, is that that change, that filter we had replaced, we voted on, 9 yards? And then the grant expenditures of those buckets, the recycle buckets, and the grants all sitting there. I have no problem with this at all.
Yeah, that, the item number, I guess it's 33460, no, I'm sorry, 4319382, $11,000. I thought we'd voted on that. We took that out of borrowed money and moved it in the salt, is that correct? I thought we'd voted on that one before.
But we have to do the.
We have to ask going into the budget, we agreed to do it, this sits in the budget.
Yeah, they voted to do it.
Yeah. We can get it, yeah. Right, they voted to do it, yeah. But this, this, this is just a clerical thing that shows you going in the budget.
But that, that $11,000 came out of borrowed money for the rehab down the street, you're right?
Just a motion to approve them in.
I see.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Roque, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is consideration of ordinance 2015-02, Budget Amendment for Newport Grammar School.
Again, Mayor, that is ordinance 2015-02, An Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2014-2015 for Newport Grammar School.
And I'm sure their amendments is like ours, just.
Same topic, yes.
Concepts, so. Any discussion or a motion to approve the amendment for Newport Grammar School?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roque, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is consideration of ordinance 2015-03, City of Newport Budget for Fiscal Year 2015-2016.
The caption of that ordinance reads, "Ordinance number 2015-04, An Ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting a committed capital projects fund for the city of Newport, and committed tax rate to provide revenue for capital projects beginning with fiscal year July 1st, 2015."
Okay, Council, discussion or motion? First reading.
First reading of three.
Of three, yes, the.
No, two. First reading of two, Terry?
Yes, sir. We have two readings of the budget.
And this is the first reading of the budget?
Of the budget, yes.
I think you read the capital projects. You did, you read the capital projects. That's, that's item D. Here, is this it?
Oh, three.
Mine don't have it anything.
Here, go Terry.
But the caption's not in it.
The caption's not in it.
Consideration for reading 2015-03, uh, city of Newport budget, fiscal year 2015-2016.
The ordinance is not in here.
It's not mine either. Did y'all have it? Is it in yours?
I had it here, I had it here. I, I had it outside.
He's got it now, okay.
Let me correct that. This is ordinance number 2015-02, An Ordinance for the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the city of Newport, and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016.
Did you say that was 2015-02?
Yes, sir.
That is.
That's the budget amendment for the Grammar School.
I think there was originally, when she put it together, because we had so many last-minute changes, this ordinance was originally labeled 2015-02. Then we got the Grammar School budget amendment for this current fiscal year, so she put it in place as number two. The reading should be 03, and she did a, should have made that correction, I think she made.
So, that should be 03.
It is 03.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion, but we did.
Can we not vote on those separately? Is it required that we vote Grammar School and the city together?
On the amendments?
No, it's not, we're talking about the, I thought we're talking about the budget.
Well, there's some confusion, Roger, on the, the, the way the ordinance is writ, and the.
The way it's numbered.
The, the numbers are off.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, the numbers are off. That's what we're trying to do, that the numbers are off. That's why we're trying to get corrected, the number system.
We can get one for Newport, and then one for the Grammar School. But one is the correction I saw, put the Newport Grammar School and the city in the same. And I would, what I'm asking is, will they be voted separate?
Well, now, we've done voted on the budget amendments for the city, and, I think they have to be done separate, don't they, Terry?
No, this ordinance does them together.
And I don't think it should.
Okay.
They would be, when they go down to the state, they'll have to be covered.
Yes, when they go to the state.
But they do not have to be voted on, this group. I think they should be voted on as 2003, 2000.
Item C. Okay, all right.
Because, you know, you might be in favor of the Newport City school system, but not in favor of the Newport. And then you'd have to vote, you'd have to vote for both at the same time. And I think it's a formality, it should be required to do that, for two separate budgets.
I think they're going to be the same, I think, but I think as for proper, Terry, am I wrong? Should they vote?
I, I think we could vote on them either way. The problem is, the way the agenda is set up, it has them in one ordinance. And the ordinance that, that I prepared to read correctly is ordinance number 2015-03, and that is the ordinance that's on the agenda, and it says, "An Ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting annual budget for the city of Newport, and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016." That, that is the item on the agenda.
Are you talking about item C?
I'm talking about, yes, sir.
Item C.
Item C.
And that was put together, that's late, because I had his act over the table.
So, see, mine doesn't have anything about third item C, is that what you're talking about?
Uh, James, it's always, I mean, that's the normal protocol anywhere.
It doesn't say anything about the grammar. That's the way you're, that's the way you can do it. Now, in the past, there are many times in the past that it's not been done, because as Mr. Hurst pointed out at the budget workshop, and as I was going back through the book to search prior tax increases, I found where the budget was approved in November, two years in a row, and October, two, three years in a row. So, at that time, the city, the school budget had been done separately, because it was ready on time, and had, and, and ready to go, and C's budget was not. So, they had to be voted on separately. Technically, you, you know, you send them together, and they're supposed to send them down together, and they're supposed to, but the city in the past, up until last, up until last year, was not on time. Now, the city is on time, and so, we're able to put them together the same way as the state, because ours is on time on schedule. But in the past, up until last year, ours was never on time on schedule, so they had to.
So, this is the way, that, once it's voted upon and passed, if it's passed, then it goes to the.
Well, after the second reading.
After the second reading, but it has to go, it'll go as a combined budget.
It goes from this point, it's a budget, and that's it.
Okay. It, it's, it's a joint budget with both of them. Terry, you read all of that, didn't you? Okay, you got that. Any other discussion, or do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Have we got our dot, eyes dotted, t's crossed here as far as the clarification of what we're, what we're doing?
Yes, we do now.
I'll read it one more time. I think the Newport, uh, city school system, FY16 budget should be voted, voted separately for the city of Newport, objective budget for 2015, 2016, for two different documents. They only title a couple when they go down to the city, and then we don't, we don't integrate these into one document. They still go down as two documents, but I don't see why we're voting on one document.
Combined as a budget, but it's one document. It's two budgets in one document.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll let, you know, they're not integrated together. The two documents aren't integrated into one, uh.
So, one document, and they go.
But they're not integrated as one document, are they, James?
They're never one budget, they're always two separate budgets. They are, if they are one document, we vote separate.
Yeah, but they're two separate budgets, and I think that'll be voted on as two separate budgets.
Roger, if you wanted to, to make the motion, and if there was the votes to pass it, to cha, you know, change the rules again, we could put it on the end to have them voted on separate. If you want to make a motion to do that.
I'd want it voted on separately.
Okay, we got a motion to.
Be in favor of the school budget, not in favor of the city budget. And I think every one of us wants that option.
We got a motion on the table here. We got a motion on the table here to amend the rules, to put at the end of the meeting or another letter after the Tanner fundraiser, that the budget should be voted on separately. We got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got a second. Any other discussion? You go, Kyle, please.
Alderman Jeff Banter?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Pencil?
I want to be clear on what we're voting for here.
We're going to put the grammar budget separate from the city budget, to vote on them separately at the end of the, the last item on the meeting, but we're waiving the rules now to move and split them up. So that you can vote for, for or against the grammar budget, or you can vote for or against the city budget.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, item D, consideration of ordinance 2015-04, is that right?
Are you going to vote on, go ahead and work off of the city budget, you're going to vote on it?
Both of them.
Have them vote before you do that.
Yeah.
This is tied to the main budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to move it to the end?
Yes.
Okay, so, D will move to the end without a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so C and D will move to the end of the meeting. Item E is consideration of resolution 2015-08 Tax Anticipation Note.
Mayor, what that does is just allow us to move forward in the process, it does not approve the tax anticipation note, it only allows us to move forward with it, that will be brought back once we're out of the process, the base may be out of the business.
Okay.
And you all will decide when bids come back on what y'all want to do, that would allow us, we have to, it's a waiting process, and so we really need permission now to move forward with the process.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve them moving forward with the tax anticipation note?
I make no motion. Second.
Got a motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor indicating saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no?
No.
Four yeses and one no. Item F is consideration of T-Dot Highway Maintenance Contract.
Mayor, this is a contract that's been in place, I think since 1994, '93 or '94 with the state where we are being merged, the minor requires along the state highway, and it comes up for renewal this year, it's very beneficial to us in the past, and it just, at that time, we look at the beginning of that, I guess Ben and Jared, they back there somewhere, they have any questions, I don't think there's any changes in it for a lot of years, I think it's just pretty much a duel as it should for the life of the year, but it is, it is something that you all have to review each year.
Can you get him to go deeper, Ben?
I'll try.
All right. Thanks.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicating saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed is no? I hear none. Item G is consideration of parade permit for Empower Cock County.
I want for any representatives of them here tonight, they have asked for permission to have a parade permit, and they've also asked if we would waive the, if it's approved, if we waive the, if the... So is there anyone here from Empower Cock County who wants to talk about the parade? I really don't know, I don't think that they're wanting to march from one point to another, really don't have much information on it.
Did it cross a block anywhere? You're going to have to have police to cover it.
Yes, sir. The letter that we got is in here, we got all, so that letter tells everybody, you know that. I kind of, obviously, I would be good on that.
That's a good program, that's a good, can't get open, unfortunately, it's a good program.
It says they want to, uh, walk the lower part of the law to Cock County High Schools with the courthouse, law, on Sunday afternoon, June 7th, to show our unity and loyalty to City of Cock County over the time of our director of legislation.
Do we have a motion?
No, the two things...
The motions is to drop the $200,000...
Correct.
Wait, step, approve the parade permit, number one, and then the second issue is you want to waive the fee.
Can we do that jointly?
Sure.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the permit and waive the fee.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? Bless you. Is there a second? Okay, Bobby's second. Any other discussion? Uh, do it, Roca, please.
Alderman Jeff Banter?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes, I just wish to have someone show up, if you want, let me know.
Alderman Mike Pencil?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes, also, you know, we don't open up a can of worms on this season, you know, everybody's coming around, this is a good thing and a good organization, the purpose is real good, you don't want to open up a can of worms that easy.
Okay, item H, discussion of 24/7 yard sales and signage issues on the bank of stores in the city. Alderman Jeff Banter?
Amongst other phone calls, were people, I think I know where they get my number at, but one out of every four phone calls or conversations, even when I started this process, people said they wanted to clean the city up. And two of the three things, and there's another that came across my mind today, but I'll, I'll stick to the agenda, is the excess signage on stores, tobacco stores, that are attached, I mean, it looks like a unorganized flea market. I know that tobacco companies strive on, I used to work for Philip Morris Tobacco Company, my bonus is based on the number of signs I could put up. Well, store owners, I don't think care less, but to me, it's eyesore, and I can name four businesses where it's nothing but an eyesore, the excess signs that are out, you know, you know, we know they sell cigarettes, we know they sell beer, we know they sell lottery, I don't need 17 signs to say cold beer right here, or cigarettes sold here. And also, the second part of this is, I, without, I don't think it's appropriate to me name locations, but people that are doing 24-hour, seven-day-a-week yard sales at night, right beside the street, putting a cover on it, and next morning pulling the cover off, the one in particular, right here next to Broad's Market, it's, they sit out there till it's time to go to bed, I'm not knocking on them, hopefully make $500 a day. But, when I drive by there, that, that's a business. That, that's not a yard sale, that's a business. And people taking note of that, are you wanting to clean up Newport? Am I going to make a Mount Alamo Hill? I don't think so. I just think little things like that. And the third thing is, I might as well throw it in there, when you drive down downtown Newport, we need to, we're talking about pride, I've heard the word pride from somebody the other day, we need to get with these people that have these vacant buildings, say at least wash, wash your windows.
Well, Mark is addressing the issue of broken windows and the weeds and growing up. Is Mark here?
I want to put some teeth in it, and I know Mark's working on it. I want to put some teeth in it.
I'm sorry, I had to step out to get some paperwork. Are we talking about more than just the yard sales and tobacco signs?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was just talking about my bucket list.
The abandoned buildings.
Bucket list, yeah.
The abandoned buildings.
Yeah, the abandoned buildings, we thought we had a gold mine when we had that wonderful grant to buy them and dispose of them, and then turns out it was a loan instead of a grant. But I, I've been talking with all the building owners, asking them to either demolish or to bring them back into code, or at least fix the outside so that they look occupied. And almost everybody's saying we don't have the money for it. With that grant, that was going to solve that problem, but unfortunately, what do you do? You know, we, we could force them to sell their buildings, but obviously, they want to get the best price for it. And this is not the market for being able to dispose of properties at a reasonable value, I don't think.
Let's talk about the signs first, signage.
Yeah, I've gone to all of the tobacco, discount tobacco stores, I've handed them three sheets of documents here that explain their sign regulations and what the allowable product sale signs that they can have on their building, which are only temporary. Obviously, it's gotten out of hand, and every one of them have said, we didn't put them out there. It's the tobacco companies and the soft drink companies that are attaching them up.
Well, they totally do.
Yeah, and, and I have gotten them to sign, actually, I calculated the front wall width by height, and then divided by 25% to give them an allowable product sale signs maximum. And everyone that I've gotten to sign these so far have agreed that's what they will follow. I said, only on your front wall, none on your side walls, back fence, or the back wall. And they say, but if, if my customers are driving around a building, how are they going to know? Well...
Well, they know what they're there for.
Yes.
There's one store that's got 32 signs attached to the wall. And you know what? I know advertising pays, but I ain't got time to read 32 signs.
No.
Not that I'm driving through there.
The, most of the complaints that have come in were on the Cosby Highway Store and the two on West Broadway. One store owner, the service station, said, you got a knife, let's go take care of them now. I happened to have a little razor, and I said, all right, we'll take care of these right now. The others, I have to give them a certain amount of time. The, when a written requirement is given to them, they have to be given, usually it's two weeks to a month, but I told them, within two weeks, get rid of them. And they said they would.
With that said, Mark, there's, there's three flags flying on Cosby Highway, American flag, state of Tennessee flag, and then Super 8 flag, it's been flying, flying for six months. Can we put some teeth in them, get their sign fixed?
Yes, that Super 8, I've talked to them three times now, gave them a deadline, and their argument is the cost. They've already gotten a negotiation on new signage to be put up, and why it's not up yet, I don't know. But, you know, I can certainly tell them, get it down now. I mean, they've certainly had the timeframe, but obviously, the winds are blowing the, the banner thing that they have up there on the signs right now, and they can't keep it straight.
So they've passed their deadline, they've seen that, so me being ignorant to the fact, can we start finding them?
We can haul them into court, the maximum fine is $50. And, you know, we utilize city court, in order to find anybody more than that, you'd have to go to sessions court or circuit court, and you're talking about a long timeframe on something like that. I've, in order to find them, $50 every day that it continues, have to start the whole process over, the notifications and the, and the timeframe and the issuing of a citation to them. Well, I think that gives them...
I think you've got a group here that's behind you, just enforce the codes, and, and that's, we're behind you.
Yes. Okay.
But, take your, uh, take your spendable money up to $60, Jeff. No longer have 10, you'd have 6.
We, we use that same...
You know, here's, here's my point on the, there's, there's windows broken. You know, I think that's a safety issue that needs to be addressed, taped up, whatever, but I don't think there's any excuses for vines are growing and bushes and, and, you know, glaciers out is a danger for kids, anybody, so...
The bricks falling off the building.
Yeah, so...
Thank you, Mark.
Going down through there, the Christmas tree's still up on Main Street, and people go, the heck. I'm going to jog down through there and jerk them off.
That's it.
Can we make a resolution? We'll stop by the old avenue, see if there's any cameras.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, thank you.
Did you want to discuss the yard sales?
Uh, yard sales, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, the, the yard sales are supposed to be, not in writing, but supposed to be a residential type thing, that is typically on the weekends. Sometimes it's Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and it's the owner trying to make a little extra money or to get rid of something. We don't have anything that puts regulation in it to force them to only sell X number of times a year. And we have some business or some residences that are trying to do continuous yard sales. And like the one up on Cosby Highway next to Western Auto, I ended up notifying the owner that lives down in Georgia and posting the house that they are conducting business, and they're living there, so they need to choose one or the other. And the owner decided it's going to be a residence, not a business, so that's why that one disappeared. This one up here in East Broadway is, well, same situation, except not nearly as prominent as what Cosby Highway was. And I've talked to them, I've cited them, well, by letter, and I understand that they are still doing a large amount during the week, so...
I would make a suggestion, Jeff, if this is okay with you, that you have the planning commission to look at it and maybe look at other towns to see if they have any regulations, and then report back to council once your findings are...
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm not picking on anybody, but the people ask.
Okay, oh, yeah.
That's the reason I'm sitting here.
I know.
I'll tell you four names, people asked from last week, please.
Thank you, Jeff. Item I is discussion of cabin donation proposal. Y'all want to discuss that, or? Yeah. Put that on the next meeting?
If you don't mind, please.
See if I have problems with that, about the cabin.
I'm the biggest problem, that's not a problem.
Him and I, once that proposal was put forward, him and I, him, Dodger and I, had some discussions on how we might utilize, but at that time, we had not seen picture of where exactly, you know, historical significance, uh, one, one, sorry, one, one reality of circumstances, so, you know, there are some potential things out there we feel like we might could do with something, but you all have touched on it already on the generals of college, you know, it wouldn't be cheap to move it and get it, to disassemble, transfer, and reassemble, it's not going to be cheap, so we would have to kind of get some idea on what we're looking at as far as the expenditure side to make it happen. I think it's a great gesture, I think it's a great idea, him and I, we discussed it, we both agree on that, it could be a great asset for us, but number one, you've got to have a good proposal on what we're going to do with it, and number two, is know exactly what we're looking at as far as what kind of expenditure.
People start hanging around it and stuff like that.
So you can, you can kind of research that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that good enough for everybody?
It's a good idea about, you know, how we can do it.
Right. Okay. Item J... Item J, property sale that James was talking about earlier. Y'all want to make the motion now to allow them to start the process of selling some properties?
I definitely make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just exclude the Tanner building from that, the only thing I have.
All the rest of the boards are free. Lane Street, two properties down there.
Is that the yellow building?
Yeah. So, we're moving on those three only right now?
Well, just begin with that, that's our first, because those are the most valuable, so we want to get those on the market first, and then start evaluating the buyer. But that's not, I think that's going to be built, that's...
Bob, very quickly, I had a, this needs to be discussed. The piece of land between Bojangles has the, what's it called, according to EPA now, the drain field? Is that somebody that's interested in that piece of property? Is that something that we need to get with EPA and see the... Some people told me that you buy a piece of property that's attached to a drain field, you're looking for trouble.
Yeah.
And can you refer to me somebody for them to talk to, possibly?
EPA.
EPA?
Yeah.
Anybody in the state of Tennessee local?
I don't think so. Nobody.
Okay. Between Bojangles and the old Ride Steakhouse, there's a piece of land that settles down to...
Actually in the drain...
You can, you can...
I think if you look at the map, it may actually be in part of the original stream of the drains for that property.
So, that's unusual, something to say.
Yeah, that's what the water, this part of that rain system, you have to put that in place, because when you put a parking lot and play, diverting all that rainwater out of the ground, so you have to channel somewhere.
I know that's an excess property. Can you find out, hit the word, talk to Bob, he doesn't come to my head.
Yep.
All right. Just like, somebody's interested in it, that's the reason I'm asking.
Okay, I think we need to vote on the property sale. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Okay, let's move to new item L, which would be the fiscal year budget for Newport Grammar School that we discussed earlier. That would be 2015-2016. Now, will that change? I mean, we've got 2015-3.
Yes, Mayor, and the way I have done this with council's approval, I have divided that ordinance into A and B.
Okay, but it'll have the same numbers.
It will be, and I, just because it was first, I labeled A as the city of Newport Budget and B the Newport Grammar School.
Okay, so we can do the city budget first. Would that help matters?
Well, that's fine.
Okay, let's do the city budget first.
And I'll read the way that, the caption of that ordinance will be, and we'll have that prepared and writing at the second reading, assuming that something passes. Now, item first reading. And that would be ordinance number 2015-03A, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the city of Newport, and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
Okay, for the city budget, we have, the floor's open for motion to approve the budget as presented on the first reading.
I'll make the motion.
We've got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Ancher?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Okay, I've got this item M, Newport Grammar School budget, that would be B.
Yes, Mayor, that's ordinance number 2015-03B, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
Okay, floor's open for a motion. Newport Grammar School's budget.
So, move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Ancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you. Being no other items on the agenda.
We got the capital.
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Excuse me, yes, that is ordinance number 2015-04, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting a committed capital projects fund for the city of Newport, and a committed tax rate to provide revenue for capital projects, beginning with fiscal year July 1, 2015.
What is that rate?
Well, we want it proposed, again, discussing the land, but folks are not, during the budget workshop, we discussed a lot, and the, you move away from capital pathway notes, which now works means borrowing money, and you need to do, you need to buy equipment, and you need to do major improvements. One of the things we talked about was city halls might have to have a roof in the next three years, that's 200,000, $10,000. We're going to have to put the paint flat down, and the remodel, which you people out there, the new station, those, we have that, 200,000, $200,000. Station one and station two, that which, our halls, so this goes on and on. And so, in the past, what we have had to do is borrow that money, and that's how we've got this debt that we're in, where every time we did garbage trucks, we borrowed money, we did fire trucks, we borrowed money, when the regulations were placed, we borrowed money. So, what this does, and this is what is recommended by the state, it's what's recommended by the auditors, every class you build to, it talks about capital financial finances and future, the city or county, is to create this fund, and you dedicate, along with the proposals, putting 40% of the tax increase into this fund. And then, in three years, we'll have a good loophole, and so many years, you can do this, and you're pay as you go. You're not borrowing money, you're not paying the interest on that money, and staying in that for 25, 30 years, as we've been doing in the past. This does away with that, and these funds, we do this so nobody can raid. So, down the road, somebody can say, "Well, you know, we're running a little short over here, let's borrow," or "We spent a little money out of the capital fund," but by dedicating those funds this way by ordinance, nobody, neither none of us, or anybody down the road, unless they fucking do this, can raid that money, except for what it's earmarked for, which is to buy equipment, building improvements, the stuff that you've got to have to operate down the road. And we have projected six years down the road, where we've got it plotted out, that we've projected, now you can have bad luck, and you can have good luck, if you have good luck, we're on the money, and if we have bad luck, or something fires up, falls in, y'all earthquake, you know, anything unexpected, you know. But this, by having this dedicated fund, will be on a pay-as-you-go schedule, won't be borrowing any more money to do the things you have to do, the way it's been done always in the past. This has never been done before. It's been done for lots of other cities, but it's never been done with this. So, they're ready to do it, and that's what we, I think it's a prudent way to do it, and it's, that's our recommendation.
It still requires borrowing $600,000 this year, correct?
Yes.
And then, the 40, that's only 40%.
This is capital, that's different.
The total tax increase, though, Jim, that's what I think most people want to know.
The total tax increase is $1, is what is proposed in the model program. And as I say, developing this fund, the question was, what is the amount going into this fund? The answer is 40% or 40 cents.
And that leaves 60?
Keep it within $1, so 40% is 40 cents. Now, you're talking about the tax anticipation note, the 600,000 we talked about earlier, that we asked for permission to report to them this year, and we will have to do that this year, but with this tax increase, and this is not this 40 cents, this is other cents, you know, this is...
This is the other 60 cents.
We have portion of it, yes, sir. It's going to be used to get away from the tax anticipation note, or we no longer have to do it. We're hoping to face that out within three years. That is our goal, so that within three years, the tax anticipation note is gone, and we will not have to do that again. Again, this is something that's recommended to get away from, now, and we legally continue to do it, we can, but that is, it's not proven to do that, it's not recommended that you do that, and the financing itself, you don't have to... What this does, and I know what people say, you know, "Wow, that's, you know, that's a big tax increase." It is, but for this for the sake of education, in 2000, we gave a raise taxes 30 cents. In 2001, we raised taxes 30 cents. If you draw a line right there, and you move till today, the city has increased taxes none. There's been no tax increase for 14 years. During that same timeframe, the county has raised taxes three times for a total of $1.11. So, we're still, if you look at the 14-year window, we're still increasing taxes less than the county did during the exact same time period, and for all those years, starting in 2003, when the county raised them another 30 cents, you've been paying that ever since. Every year since, you've been paying that 30, and then when they raised them beginning in 2005 or '06, another 30, you've been paying that ever since, like in 2011 or '12, whatever it was, when they raised them another 45 or 35, whatever it was, you've been paying that ever since. With us, you have not. 14 years, we've not, we've not imposed a tax increase on you. And I wish that, you know, it's like I've told each one of these gentlemen, you know, we would love to be able to sit here and say, "Hey, look what we found, look what we figured out, we've saved the day, you know, we have saved the people having to bear this burden," but it is not there, and that's why we had to emphasize in our stuff, here are all the things we have. You know, we have a high-quality school, we have a high-quality fire department, we have a high-quality police department, we have an animal shelter that a lot of cities don't have. We have all these things, and everybody, anybody that you want to find will argue for each one of them, some people will argue for all of them, I'll argue for all of them. I think we need to keep all of them, but to do that, you've got to pay for them. Now, you know, we can wibble, and we can say we wish, just like these gentlemen said, you know, "Boy, I wish we hadn't spent this $50,000, or that $100,000, I trust the man, I wish we hadn't spent a lot of stuff, spent before I come down here, and she came in, and we've had to deal with this." But we've, you know, the saving grace for us has been delinquent property sales, we've about sold everything we can sell on delinquent taxes, and the last two years have been phenomenal with the sales tax. That's the only thing that's kept us above today. And you cannot, the property, you know, the selling of stuff for delinquent taxes, that's one-time money. Once you sell it, it's sold, and it's done, it's one-time money. You can't, it won't be there next year. And the sales tax, if you go back and track it, it goes up and down, up and down, so you can't, you can't depend on it. You can gamble, you can roll the dice and gamble, but boy, if you lose, you're in trouble. With property taxes, you know that money's going to come in. Yeah, you're going to have some, it's a aid or something, don't pay them, but in general, that money's going to come in. There are only a few revenue streams available for us to tap into. I'll, you know, fees, and that's, you know, that's just a few dollars here and there. There's talks about looking at the, doing a sanitation fee. When we looked at that, that was going to be more expensive in the long run than doing the tax increase, when you factor in what you could use that money for versus all the other things that you need, that you needed money for. It was going to be more expensive to do a sanitation fee and a smaller tax increase overall, it's going to be more money. So, that didn't make sense. The hotel motel tax, you know, that's been brought up, but we looked at every way possible to try to utilize that money. Well, state law says that with a hotel motel tax, which is currently 2%, brings in $95,000. We could legally double that to 4%, but the money has to be used for tourism. It has to be. So, yeah, we could go spend another $95,000 promoting tourism, but that don't put a roof on a building, that don't buy a dump truck, or a garbage truck, or a fire truck. So, that money, it's, there's no money there to be used. Sales tax is maxed out. You can't, you know, we are at the maximum allowed by law for sales tax. So, that leaves property tax. And I mean, it's a sad fact, and if we want to get our house in order, this is, we, we have looked, tried to come up with every way we can to get our house in order.
It's been, I thought the wheel tax can't be, but the...
City can't do it.
City, that's what I try to tell people. A lot of people suggest wheel tax, probably, but the city cannot do a wheel tax.
No, the city cannot by law implement a wheel tax. We do not have the authority to do that.
But James, isn't this going to put us above the rate of a county on taxes?
Well, I'm not...
That's a question?
I'm not sure, but I, but they're in the same boat we are now, they're going to have to look, they're just now starting their budget process, so I don't know if they're going to, I don't know where they're going to be at the end of that.
Well, right now, we, when we implement this, then they're going to be, we're going to be some 34 cents ahead.
I'm not sure what the rate is off the top of my head.
Well, it, a year ago. Anyway, we're going to have to be paying higher city taxes than they are county taxes, unless they go up on theirs 40 cents.
Well, my question on that would be, we want to provide you the most services. Does the county do your police services? Does the county pick up the garbage? Does the county, I mean, the cities who provide your services, you know, I've had people, when, we went through this a lot during tax season, when folks would come in and pay their taxes, because the new ferals kind of, you know, were surprised by it, because people would say, "Well, you know, I don't mind paying my city taxes because I know what to get for it. I can rattle off to you the benefits I get from my city taxes, but I can't tell you one thing I get from my county taxes." And I've told somebody, I said, "Well, you know, you got the court system, you got the jail, you know, but as far as the daily services that you routinely rely on, you get those from the city, you don't get those from the county." I mean, I'm sorry that that puts you above that as far as the ratio goes, but numbers don't lie. I mean, if you want to maintain the services you're getting, that's where you are. And we can, we can dance around it, we can try to sugarcoat it, double speed, and go on, but that is the bottom line, bottom line.
Do we have a motion to approve the capital projects funds? Ordinance 2015-04.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Jeff Ancher?
Yes.
Alderman Roger Ribble?
No.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Let's talk the business. Could I see a show of hands who wants to make comments at Citizens Comment? Okay.
I'm going to have to go with the rest. Where's the time, where's the time, Rick?
We got it right here.
You've got five minutes, Mr. Bob.
Turn it loose, big fella, turn it loose.
There you go.
I feel special, I made the mayor leave. As for the cabin, I fully approve of it. I believe we should do an offering for it, because, think of it this way, like I've said before, which Mr. Profit and everybody heard me, history would be something that could bring a lot of tourism to this county. We need tourism. Look at Sevier County, all their things over there, they've got little roller coasters, just things randomly, even the popcorn machines and stuff. That makes money, that could bring in money for our county if we did stuff like that here, a little popcorn machine around the road or something, it doesn't matter what it is. It brings money, we need money in the county. I'm getting tired of hearing, "We are under budget, we're having to borrow money." Well, if we'd start making, making money, bringing in tourism, thousands of things, this cabin is being donated to us. If we take the opportunity to take this, we would be able to pull it off. Things in this county could be done if we put forth our efforts, step our foot down, pray about it, talk to God, do what we got to do, and get our county fixed. That's about all I got to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I don't even know this guy, but I appreciate it.
He's at his corner with us, he's a part of us.
I appreciate it.
Point's will take.
I'd like to ask the question, I thought that we put the Tanna Preservation Fundraiser
I'd like to ask the question, I thought that we put the town preservation fundraiser at the end of the agenda today, to vote yes or no?
That's correct. That is, we did, we did, we did not, she's exactly right, sorry.
We haven't adjourned, we can still do that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
It's called you five minutes.
There is an item on the agenda, I'll, I'll take over, that we approved the town preservation, the meeting that they want to have in August.
August sixth.
I make a motion that we accept that, I make a motion that we accept that proposal. I'll second that. Do we have a second for Mr. Ribble?
Mayor, we've forgotten about the town preservation fundraiser, and there's been a motion paid and a second that we approved that date that they requested, so if you want to call for the vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We've got a motion.
We're ahead of you.
Okay, you don't have a motion, second, why didn't you go ahead and vote?
You walked in there.
We're waiting on your five minutes, or we had your time.
At least I didn't get up in the court to smile, like, "Come on, Mayor," on TV.
We did a vote.
Okay, all those in favor indicating saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none.
I had a question about the surplus property, how much do you project, James, that you might make, and where will that money specifically go?
Well, what we asked for was permission for, to get permission.
I understand that part.
I don't know, we won't know, you know, because he's got to evaluate the property and see.
Do you have an educated guess, I mean, roughly? And then where will that money go?
Say that we got fifty cents on the dollar, we would be, you know, we would be doing good, and we gave forty thousand, eighty-two thousand, fifty-four, nine, five for, for them, so that's a hundred and twenty, that's a hundred and eighty thousand, so if we get half that, that would be ninety-five, if we get, if we could get half that.
Where will the money specifically go? What are you gonna do with it?
Well, what we proposed was that the money was borrowed to buy these buildings. So what we recommended was that we pay that money we get out of those buildings on what we borrowed to buy them.
Okay.
Now, that, I mean, it's not gonna pay, they're not gonna pay for it, so we're not gonna give back what we paid for them, I hope you would, like I said earlier on, we're gonna get twice what we paid. But what we had discussed at the workshop was, and that's not, that could be changed, that's just a proposal, but the proposal was that we use the money to pay back what we borrowed to buy, we're doing what we're in debt, but pay that debt back.
Did any of you consider the proposal I made when I was running for Alderman, about setting up some type of system where people can pay their taxes on a regular basis, you have residual income coming all the time, you won't have to wait to that one or two days of the year, February the twenty-ninth, and for senior citizens like me, it may be a help for them, you know? Well, you keep saying, "I like the idea," but when are you gonna, looking to it?
We'll look into that, James.
Because, I mean, that, that's something that would become, residual income is what people like, it comes in a little, and trickles every month, you know, rather than you waiting to February the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth.
That might get us a welcome at this place.
It might.
You're still bringing in the same amount, but, yeah, I want you, if I understand her correctly, she's talking about, say, you pay your property taxes on October first and February twentieth, so if your property taxes are five hundred dollars, and you want to pay them incrementally, that means you can come in and divide that five hundred over twelve months, because you're paying it on a scale, so it's the same amount of money, it's not, instead of getting it now, you're not making any money, you're not making extra money, you're just.
No, but you have money available, that's what I'm saying, you will have money available. I'd have to, you know, you wait until one day of a year, hoping that people have it.
You've got four months during the year, not one day, you've got four months.
Most people wait till.
Excellent.
Most people wait to the end, they get their little check, or whatever they get.
The worst time around is, you never know, like, when the property's sold, we may, none of us might never be living there, so, you know.
I'm sure we won't be living. I'm sure of that, I'm pretty sure of that.
You get to talk. Okay, so that's all in the Citizens Comments. Yes, Scotty?
I'm against the city raising the taxes, it's funny, that, only thing we can come up with, we voted for you guys to solve a problem, not to make a problem, and I'm already paying twelve hundred dollars a year for taxes, and my city taxes is one hundred dollars less than what I'm paying county taxes. You know, people that's on set incomes, it's like she said, should be thinking about other ways, if they're not aware, no other way, it's easier to just sit down and just say, "You know, I think we need to just raise taxes on these people," that's what I think, and I think it's sad, because it's, we got a lot of people, senior citizens that live in the city, don't think about that?
James, didn't the city vote a few years ago, when, if you're, what, age sixty-five and older, you're exempt from property tax increases?
You can come in and apply for that for tax relief, for taxes, do not go away.
Well, if you're make, a little bit over that, you can't get it, so, you know, there you are.
That's the state law, that's not anything we have.
Well, I know, but I, I know, I mean, I think there should be some other ways, that you guys could come up with something. I voted for everyone, but.
We've tried, we didn't sit around and promise you, I know I didn't, to sit around and say, "It's just raise the property taxes," we tried to exhaust every other means we have, if you can find some ideas or something, let us know, you know, next time or something.
I will.
I'd be fine.
And another thing, I'm sorry, but rudeness is one thing I can't stand, and I don't appreciate how you talk to Roger in front of all these people, that's very rude, thank you.
That's fine, I did what I had to do. Scotty?
You know, I understand that everybody wants more revenue, you know, that's just the way the game's played, you gotta have money to operate. But I just don't like the idea of raising taxes always for the people who own the property. What is it, thirty-seven percent in Newport, I forget exact the number, but, you know, we not only pay city taxes, we pay county taxes, and like this lady was saying, that's an unnecessary burden, I think, to put it all on the property owners. There should be something other that you could do. Now, you know, a dollar, a person, you know, what was it, two hundred, two hundred and fifty more a year? I, I was glad to hear that people on fixed incomes, people who have retired, worked all their life to have a home, they're having it tough now. And it's not just them folks, people all over this city and counties having it tough. We're in a bad economic time right now. If it wasn't for my sister and I, my mother, her, she wants to live in her home, but if it wasn't for us, you know, she couldn't live in her home, she's on a fixed income, like so many other people. We need to consider, not just jump at, "Oh, this is the only thing we can do," you know, I, I used to operate, when I was growing up, we had what we called the fruit jar economics. That means you put the money in the fruit jar, and if you need to buy something, you can't buy it if you don't have that much money in the fruit jar. That's called living in our means. I, I got you, Jeff, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, people are having it tough today. I mean, this is not, you know, one or two of us, it's just not the senior citizens, but there's a lot of people in this county having it tough right now, and in this city having it tough, and we need to think about that. I realize revenue's important, you've gotta have it, you gotta pay the bills, but sometimes, I know in, in my limited experience in finances, if you don't have it, you can't spend it, and you've gotta operate in your means, if the money's not there, you can't, it's, it's not there. I understand that, like I do, but what I want you to consider is, a dollar, I mean, that's a, for most people, that's a lot to swallow, and what I'm saying, a quarter sounds better to me, you know, I wouldn't raise Cain with a quarter, and most people wouldn't, maybe fifty cents, but just to throw out a dollar and say, "This is what we're gonna do, we gotta do it," amen, end of story. I just don't see the, you know, the compassion and the, and the considering the, the people of the city, that's who you're here to represent, you know, I just ask you to think about that. I know it's on, you're the martyrs, you know, and I just don't want to have to burn you to stake, okay? Let me say one other thing, somebody asked me to mention this, the eight hundred thousand dollar thing, I've been trying to figure that out, talked to a lot of people, telephones, turning the lights on around town, and I can remember going to little boy over here at the city hall, and electric system was together, my dad worked at the electric system. I had the privilege most nights closing up over there with him and getting to flip a switch to turn the streetlights on. West End, Northport, Town, Woodlong, Lincoln Avenue, I'd be willing to do that for eight hundred thousand dollars a year, once again. But we appreciate you guys, and we, most of us here voted in, and I know you're gonna do what's right, and what you think you have to do, but please consider the tax rate, that's a lot of money, city and county, and I know we get a lot, but you know, you know where I'm hearing most of the support for the tax increase? You know, people don't live in the city, and that's not right. Thank you for your time.
I'll show you by example here how, how I live my life. I want to stand before you as a taxpaying citizen, but I stand before you as the chief of police because I can't change who I am. I have been a city taxpayer since nineteen ninety-one, when my wife and I built our house. I have been a city employee since nineteen eighty-seven, when I was fortunate to be hired by the Newport Police Department. The last substantial pay increase that I had was that I assumed the responsibility of being the chief of police for the City of Newport. I am the third oldest man at the Newport Police Department, I am the third oldest chronologically and in seniority. I have gentlemen working for me that were born after I began to work for the City of Newport. We're having to hire these young gentlemen because we're becoming a training ground, because I can't pay them enough to keep them here. And I, as a city taxpayer, will get enough pay increase to pay my taxes, but I've got a bunch of young men back here that work for me, that I'm thinking about that's gonna live here and represent you and defend you for the next thirty years, like I have for the past twenty-eight. I stand as a taxpayer telling you I support tax increase, and mine will be spent, what I get in my pay will pay my taxes, but it'll help these young boys back here live a life and retire when they're supposed to, and not work till they die. Thank you.
Do we have a motion, Judge? Do we have a second? All those in favor and capable saying yes? Opposes, no? I hear none.